I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Schenhalster? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
We have a quorum present. I'll ask everyone to stand for the pledge and the prayer. Our most kindly, gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the rain that you're sending our way. Lord, we thank you for all the kindness and the blessings that you have shown. We ask that you continue to bless our military men and women and their families, for they make so many sacrifices for us to have a freedom that we have and enjoy today. Lord, I ask that you bless us tonight as we continue to try and take care of city business and help us to do it in a way that is pleasing unto you. Amen. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have all received a copy of the minutes for May the 12th, 2015 council meetings. Are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That passes. We have two public hearings to consider tonight. The first is to reconsider ordinance 01503-006 to rezone and allow a special use for 125 Robertson Mill Road. And the second is to conduct a hearing on the ordinance 01505-011 to gain input on the proposed 2016 annual operating budget. The procedure for this hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, then the clerk will read the proposed amendment. We will then hear the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The chair will recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment. The chair will then hear from any person who would like to speak in opposition of the amendment. We will then give an opportunity for rebuttal. When the chair recognizes any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask that you first give your name and your address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so. However, in the essence of time, I am requesting that you keep your comments as brief as possible. The first hearing is to consider ordinance 01503-006 to amend the land development code to rezone 125 Robertson Mill Road from AR to CC with a special use for a car lot. Has this public hearing been correctly posted in advertisements?
Yes ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
This is to conduct a public hearing when ordinance amending the land development code to rezone and allow a special use of property located at 125 Robertson Mill Road. Property is currently owned by Baldwin County Properties LLC and is zoned AR. Owners desire to rezone property to CC and allow a special use for a car lot.
What is the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
The Planning and Zoning Commission denied this request at its April 6, 2015 meeting.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Would you come up and give your name and address, please?
I'm Patty Burns with Vicklin &amp; Company, here to represent the owner. And I appreciate you all hearing this. Each of you all have a little booklet, just of basically what we're going to talk about. One, this particular parcel has been zoned residential for a long time, since the development. I went and met with the owners going door-to-door back Easter weekend to try to catch as many people as I could. And then I had a neighborhood meeting, that was last Thursday, for some folks to come and, basically, if they had any kind of concerns, please let me know. And I think that we have addressed the concerns. One of the biggest concerns was safety and visibility. And what we did there was we made sure that everybody knew we would not be parking and blocking any visibility. If you look at your first aerial, your picture here, this is Holly, and here's your driveway. We are not going to be using this part of the parcel at all. Right here. The part that is yellow is the part that's concreted. And that is the only part that Car-Mart is interested in using and parking cars on. There's no building structure or anything going on yet. If you look at your second drawing, it points it out a little better. It shows not using. It shows the parking that Car-Mart would be using, where the building is, and where the current economy tire is. So, with this being said, one of the concerns that the neighborhood had, one was the safety, making sure there's no parking along this area, and we're not going to use it at all again. Two, it would be nice if we could restrict that entrance coming and going from Holly. And we will do that with some sort of, probably a gate. It was mentioned trying to put a curb there, but that's very expensive and very hard to remove later. Again, the parking lot will be the concrete area here. Where Car-Mart sits, this longer parcel, this is part of the property that's already approved that they can go on. So we took care of the safety issue, also the driveway issue. Their hours of operation are nine to six. They're not a long, open-type business. They also had a concern about the future, what if Car-Mart is there? They're going to sign a 12-year lease. They have 140 locations, they've been in business 34 years, and they're in, I forgot how many states, whatever. But the future of that particular parcel, if it's already commercial, they're worried about it going back to like a fast-food restaurant or some sort of convenience store. And what we've done is a restrictive covenant, which is like a deed restriction. And this will protect that entire parcel, not just the part they're parking on, but the entire parcel, to where it cannot be a convenience store or a fast-food restaurant for the next 12 years. Some people said, "What happens after 12 years?" Well, after 12 years, you don't know if they're really going to be in that same location or not. Who knows what will be happening at that point? But basically, those were the issues that everybody brought up, and those are the things that we addressed. The positives are, basically, it is, it's a new business for Milledgeville. It's new jobs. They're going to be paying taxes, they're going to enhance the property. They're going to take that existing 10,000-square-foot building. It will be completely renovated. They're going to spend about $150,000 on it. They're going to create a long-time relationship here in Milledgeville in a safe environment for Milledgeville. As far as zoning-wise, where this property is located, it is consistent with other businesses in the area, other buildings in the area, the times of operation in the area. In fact, the mall's open later. But it'll be operating away from the neighborhood. That end parcel, again, that is right there by the neighborhood, will not be impacted or used. It's not going to put any kind of strain on city services, police, fire, water, sewer, any of those kind of things. One thing I left out was, they had a real issue with the Nissan dealership. They will park the transport truck in the, I call it, the suicide lane, that middle lane, and unload cars, and it blocks Holly. We would not do that. We'll be able to pull the vehicle into the dealership and be able to unload there. So we won't be blocking Holly. We're not going to generate trash, they're not an environmental hazard. With the DOT setbacks, they're never going to come closer to the road where that area currently is, that has always been in operation, even with Choo-Choo prior. Basically, it's a quiet business, and again, it's consistent. I realize we can't make everybody happy in the neighborhood by any means. That would be really difficult. But we're trying really hard to compromise and actually bring businesses and jobs to Milledgeville. It'll create about 15 jobs, and, like I said, a long-term relationship. And I'm looking to see if I left, oh, the other thing, the most important thing, or one of the most important things, is the neighborhood, one of the concerns or comments that was brought up was that they used to have a sign. And their sign, somehow or another, fell down, was torn down, whatever happened over the years. But the owners agreed to put a sign for the neighborhood. And if you look on one of these aerials, right here, you'll see where the sign would go. Which, coming into their neighborhood, they'll have a sign. This is similar, as I understand it, that they had before. It's brick with the letters. And again, this is what the sign looks like. So I think the owner's trying really hard, you know, to make this happen. He couldn't be here tonight, he's getting ready to have a quadruple bypass. We didn't think this might be good for him. But anyhow, if you all have any questions, I would certainly like you to ask me.
I do have a question about the entrance part that seems to have drawn a concern. And that is, rather than come in, and concern of, you're talking about putting up a gate. Is that correct?
The gate is on Holly. The entrance to the property itself, into the dealership, is going to be on Robertson Mill Road. There's already an entrance right here. They do not need to go out the Holly Drive exit. I mean, to do business, they do not have to. They can operate within this area right here and come and go out of this existing drive that's there.
All right. And there's going to be a fence across where the red line is?
No, where the yellow line is, right here. The neighbors were worried about people coming into here and parking. If, say, for example, they were having a sale, they brought up the concern that they didn't want people coming in here and parking here. Even if we had a fence here, actually, we were going to have a, not a fence, it's like a rail, but the barricade, we were going to do something right here on the red line. But the neighborhood is asking us to do something here. Now, the one thing, I still want to make sure that it's a safe environment for everyone. In some ways, if you were able to go out and take a right here, that would, you know, could be safer than trying to get out here on Robertson Mill Road, which you all know is very busy. But, you know, the owner's willing to do whatever we need to do, but I would just like it to be the safest that we can do for everybody. Whether you're going to the dealership, or you're driving down Robertson Mill Road, or on Holly.
I have a question about the trucks. You said the trucks would not be in the center lane, and if the trucks would go in off of Robertson Mill. I can't see trucks going off of Robertson Mill Road going into the proposed car dealership area.
The, well, I mean, they used to pull trucks in there for Choo-Choo, but they can pull a truck in, and they're only-
Oh, so they actually don't put cars on the trucks like they do-
Like delivery trucks. Like the delivery truck that will usually-
It's a delivery truck.
Right. So they won't have to stop in the middle of the road or block Holly. They can pull into the property.
Oh, will they be transporting cars there?
Just like any car dealership where they get-
So they still be in the lane then, which is why you put those cars there?
No. No, they'll pull into, they can pull into the parking lot and unload their cars there. They're only going to have about 30 cars on that whole parking lot. They do not put them in there like Childry does or anybody else. The regular car dealerships that just stack them in there real close, they don't do that. They spread them out, and there's only like 30 cars. So if they've got a truck coming and they need to move some vehicles, they can do that. But they can load, they can unload their vehicles on their proposed site. They don't have to block the road. Now, we can't control Childry doing it. I mean, Childry's going to do however they have to do to unload their vehicles. But we will not block the road, either Holly or the center lane.
These cars, are they certain, the up-to-date cars, or late-model cars, with a certain price range cars, or what, trucks, or what?
What price range, or what?
Did you want to speak?
I was just going to ask you to answer that question.
He can come up, he can come up and answer the question. Give your name and address.
Christopher Johnson, Carlsfield, Georgia, 17 Derby Way. We have new model vehicles. And as far as to your question, to Dr. Questioner, we typically don't have an 18-wheeler come in. Our operation is small. We normally have like a three-car hauler that can come in and drop cars off once or twice a week. We don't have big cars like the Nissan dealership where they have to get 10, 12 cars at a time, or 20 cars every week. So that answers that question. But, and to you, again, we have new model vehicles. We don't have rundown vehicles, you know, because we want to have a good relationship in the community. We can't do that with, you know, certain type of vehicles. Any other questions?
One thing, on the access to Holly. If there's someone that you would like us to meet with to discuss some, you know, other safety options there, you know, please let us know, we'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, one thing with some concern about traffic going through the neighborhood, which I think is occurring no matter what, happened. And I know that Mr. Jarrett, our public works, I don't think he's here any longer, director mentioned the possibility of instituting a right-turn-only policy at each of the exits. And I'm going to turn it around, so that, you know, you indicated in the last partial hearing that we had that there was people trying to cut through to circumvent the light at Robertson Mill and Columbia to get down toward the Walmart area. And they're turning left across, a very dangerous situation, trying to save time and endangering lives at the same time. But if we had, if we instituted a right-turn-only at that point, which would be between the two restaurants, Arby's and McDonald's, so that you can only turn right, you'd get ticketed if you tried to turn left and go back across the highway. Possibly that would cut down on some of the cut-through traffic. Also instituting maybe a right-turn-only coming out of the Robertson Mill. But that's just a suggestion. It's trying to make this area a little bit safer and also to try to cut down for people that are trying to cut through and save time and go back north on 441.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, you need to come up to the podium, please, and give your name and address.
Gerald Hilliard, 2504 Melody Way here in Milledgeville. Most of the businesses that I've noticed in Milledgeville have two entrances. And if I'm not, you know, an entrance and then an exit. I think, I just wanted to be sure I understood that she said that there was just only going to be one entrance into that business, and that would be off of Robertson Mill. With one entrance, at some point, I would think that there would be a need to have another entrance if they're going, expecting to do the amount of sales, the number of sales, to make that business successful. If the property there is zoned commercial, then they would have the right to do whatever they wanted to do with it. Which means that if they wanted to change it so that they could have an exit in, I mean, an entrance, and then an exit out on Holly, then they certainly would have that right, because the property would have been changed from residential to commercial. So I come again asking that you follow, as the Planning and Zoning Board did, deny that request. Thank you.
Is there someone else in opposition? Did you want to?
Gloria Wicker, 2547 Allison Drive, Milledgeville. My opposition to this lot is that there does pose, it would pose a safety issue as far as traffic is concerned, getting in and out of, on Holly Drive. They're doing, especially during the school year, traffic is already backed up to the railroad track. And to add another business would only make more traffic. And I have a very grave concern about that. There are children that live in that neighborhood, and it would just pose a safety issue as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Ma'am, please, could I ask you a question?
He won't say anything.
I just want to clarify what you're saying. You said that traffic would back up to the railroad track. You're talking about on Robertson Mill?
On Robertson Mill, that's correct.
And it backs up when?
Especially, it's very heavy, especially during the school year, when school gets out. And you know the schools that we have, Eagle Ridge, Creekside, Blandy, and Baldwin High School, right there together. When traffic comes, when the cars, parents are bringing their children home, the traffic is usually, between four and five, the traffic is backed up, almost all the way to the railroad track, down to 441 by Walgreens and the mall. It's very, very heavy there. So unless we were going to do something about that, I am very much opposed to having that lot there.
Okay. I guess my question is, I'm trying to relate what you're saying to a very small car lot going in, and what, how does that contribute?
My only concern is that we're adding more traffic in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to speak?
My name is Don Allen, and I live at 2408 Holly Drive. I only have a few small problems with this presentation so far. When we met with the young lady here Thursday, we had, I thought we had come to the conclusion that there would be no fence on Holly Drive, but that they would build a curb there to discourage people from driving into that lot. We've got curbs in front of our houses, people don't drive into our yards. I don't think a fence is very attractive in that particular area. Number two, they presented us with a restricted covenant that they would sign, and I don't know who would enforce that restricted covenant. That's one question I had. And I would, restricted covenant goes through a whole series of stuff. But it says basically that the restrictions shall provide that no fast-food restaurant or convenience store, whether or without gas pumps, shall be allowed. I would like to see that deleted and in its place. But no commercial or nonprofit enterprise shall be allowed. By eliminating it from convenience stores and fast-food restaurants, that's too restrictive. I mean, it's too wide open for other businesses. They could put a, I don't know anything in there. So I would like, but I'd like to know who would enforce that covenant.
I'll ask the attorney to answer that.
What the city council would need to do when, if they were to vote to approve this rezoning with the special use, is anything our zoning ordinance allows for council to place whatever restrictions that they want to, that they want to place on a particular rezoning. And what council would have to do, I was making a list of things that have been represented by Ms. Burns that the owner is prepared to do. One of them, of course, is the non-use of the eastern half of the lot that borders Holly Drive. There would be no access on Holly Drive. It would be, under her proposal, it would be gated. There would be a restricted covenant in place. As you pointed out right now, that restrictive covenant says no convenience stores, pumps, no pumps, and no fast-food restaurants. And then there would be no unloading, there would be no loading or unloading of vehicles on Robertson Mill Road. If those restrictions are part of the motion and they're approved by the council, whatever those restrictions are, then they are enforced just like any other aspect of our zoning ordinance, which would be code enforcement, issuing a citation, them appearing in our municipal court. Repeated violations have typically been handled fairly sternly by our sitting municipal court judge. There are also other legal remedies that the city has, injunctions and so forth. But it's all a matter of what is, if this is going to be a motion to approve it, it's all a matter of what restrictions are placed in that approval. Because the restrictive covenant simply by itself, without making it a part- Because the restrictive covenant, simply by itself, without making it a part of our zoning ordinance here, can only be actually enforced by whoever signed, by the other property owners. And if there's a single property owner, then the covenant itself, and I'm not a real estate lawyer, but the covenant itself is not going to have the same effect, but it would have that effect if it is one of the conditions that is approved by, by this council. The council can put whatever restrictions within, within the reason, within the law, they can put whatever restrictions on this property that they choose to do. And if somebody wanted to change those restrictions in the future, they would have to come back and seek, in essence, seek the same thing as a rezoning request.
I would oppose that until such a point that it was in the zoning thing where the city council and whoever's running the show has the authority to enforce that provision.
Well, and that would be part of whatever, whatever motion gets made, if there is a motion to approve, that motion also, because this is an ordinance, so that motion also would have to contain those stated restrictions, if that's council's desire to do so. And if once they pass it, then it becomes, the, the owner is, is, can move forward, but has to be subject to those restrictions. And we enforce those like we do any of our other zoning ordinances.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Now, I'll give you a chance. Oh, you do? Okay. Come up and give your name and address, please.
I am P. L. Ward, and I reside at 2520 Melody Way Northwest in the Autumn Chase subdivision. I am in opposition to the rezoning of the area to accommodate Car Mart. As has already been stated, that this will increase traffic in our area. We have small children living in the area, and they are at risk. As it stands now, we have enough traffic circumventing the traffic light coming through our area to get to Walmart or 441 North. With the addition of Car Mart, this is going to compound the traffic issue in our area. Again, I totally oppose the rezoning of the area to accommodate Car Mart. And there's no compromising. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Ward, and I reside at 2520 Melody Way Northwest, Milledgeville, Georgia. This is my third opportunity to speak in opposition to rezoning 125 Robertson Mill Road. I was in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Committee, and the Planning and Zoning Committee with other members of the community gave their opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Committee denied that request. So, we are here again with the city council because Ms. Burns and the person that she is representing did not take no. And as citizens, we have that right to seek further help. So this is the second time that we are here, and I again oppose the rezoning of 125 Robertson Mill Road for the purposes of all that the community has already said. But not only the traffic, but for the neighborhood. I came in late, and I thought I heard Ms. Burns mention the fact that this is the sign that they want. And I want to address this question to Ms. Burns as who they want. Because I did not attend, I was unable to attend the meeting on Thursday, and I was told by someone who did attend, that she said Mrs. Ward wants the Autumn Chase sign here. And let me say to this council and to my community that I spoke with Ms. Burns when she first came around the neighborhood, and I told her my opposition again. So she said, well, what would you like to see here? I said, I would like to see the original sign that we had 20 years ago before Chuchu came in, and it said Autumn Chase right from the spot that she wants to put on car mats. And that was the sign that I was speaking of, not a sign that part of it is car mats and the other part is Autumn Chase. That was never in my mind in a negotiating with the fact that I did not want this area rezoned. I was referring to restoring it to the originality of it, and that was Autumn Chase without any commercial around. So again, for all of the above reasons, but because it is a residential area, and because the neighborhood, the people that live in our neighborhood, they have worked long and hard to have the neighborhood that we have. So why do we want to destroy it with a car mats when you turn in? I'm retired now, and I'm happy to be retired. And when I turned on Holly Drive, because the traffic is too much to go down to Robertson, uh, down to North Columbia Turn, I don't want to face lights. And no doubt about it, the people that live on Holly Drive would be directly affected by those high lights at night. Now, is that what you want for your community? I know I don't. And I say to the city council again, if the zoning, planning and zoning committee sought it to not rezon this, not because of so much of the traffic, because to preserve the neighborhood as it is. So again, my opposition is to not rezon it for anything, no compromising.
Is there anyone else in opposition? If not, I'll recognize the applicant for the purpose of rebuttal. Would you like to come up?
The traffic seems to be the thing that everybody keeps mentioning mostly, and we just can't control all the traffic. I mean, we can do, we've got ideas that we think can work. The ride-in, ride-out could work. It could work out of the, out of the driveway at Car Mart. Again, we're open to trying to make it safer, trying to make it where it's going to be a, a plus for both sides. The other thing, as far as driving into the neighborhood, if you, any of y'all drive by there, that first part that is not fenced in right now is the part that is not going to be used, and it doesn't, it just, it lines up basically past that house. So it just looks like it's a vacant lot there. It will be, except it will look better. It's not gonna be all grown up and weeds and all that sort of thing. The sign, we thought would be a nice gesture for the neighborhood, being a good neighbor, trying to create a long-term relationship. But again, we're also trying to create jobs and bring a new business to town. And again, we can't not have jobs come and businesses come because we've got too much traffic. That's stupid. I mean, it really is. I mean, we have to come up with solutions. You just can't stop everything because we've got too much traffic. That means we've got too many people at Triumph, too many people, you know, coming and going to work. I mean, we just have to decide, figure out some way to make it work, and, and they do it in other communities, and I'm sure we can do it here. But I think it would be great to have a new business and 15 more jobs.
Is there anyone else to rebuttal up in favor?
I guess on the article, when it comes to progress, as I'm looked at, period. I'm just a little bit different, and my ideas are a little different when it comes to businesses.
You need to give your name and address.
My name is Tony Fraley, and I live at 2423 Holly Drive, just a quarter mile or less down the street. When I was confronted with this, my concern was safety, because we do have an aging community, and we have a little problem seeing, going in, coming out, for the grass on one side and the tall telegram poles on the other side. My concern was the safety of seeing and going out of the neighborhood. If they adhere to what they say they are going to do for as the special usage of the property, I don't go against businesses coming so that we can get some jobs that might help some of those that are living in poverty. I think we gotta look at the bigger picture. Maybe we need to put a traffic light, maybe we need to think about a traffic light at both of the intersection to stop some of the traffic, so that we can come in and go out. I don't think a right turn will work, because sometime in the evening time, we can get out very easy. There's only certain times of day, and I've been living there 30 years, like the rest of the neighbors, 30 years, and we're having problems getting out, going left or going right sometimes. But I never wanted to be where progress is not going forth in Milledgeville. We have McDonald's and Arby's on the other end. And I know my neighbor may look at me kind of funny, but I think if you make it look better on the corners, if we can do something to make it more attractive when we turn in our neighborhood than having those mud holes. As far as coming out or entrance, we already have a problem with children. Sometime they pull, we need all these there to stop that. They pull the truck on Holly Drive, unload the cars there, or either they stop in the middle of the street, unload the cars there. We already have a problem. I think we need to try to fix some of the problems we have, along with what we are trying to do for it to bring progress, instead of just adding on top. So my thing, I don't knock the business, as long as we can adhere to the special needs and minds with the safety part of the community. That's my take on it. Let's work on the intersection, period, and see can we make it safe, because the traffic will be there with or without car mats. That's something I wish the council would think about, the safety of us living in the neighborhood, period.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there any, I'll recognize anyone that wants to speak in opposition or rebuttal. I recognize you. Yes, you do. One more time.
I'm Barbara Ward, and I live at 2520 Melody Way Northwest, Milledgeville. From what, and this is in response to Ms. Burns, and also from my neighbor, Reverend Fraley. Ms. Burns says the area is unattractive, and that is so to a certain extent. Reverend Fraley said he would rather see something that is attractive rather than the weeds and grass that is growing up. And I would too. Therefore, I would like to see the owners clean it up, and that would take care of the situation. Whoever's responsible for getting the grass and weeds cut, they should do so. I've had to call down to City Hall to tell them, I cannot turn left because the grass is growing up on that lot. Someone owns that property, they should be responsible for cleaning it up and making it representative, and then we won't have that part of being unattractive.
Anyone else? That concludes our, the presentation. If, is there anyone on council that would like to ask a question and make a comment or a statement?
Couple of things. Mrs. Ward made mention to the sign that it would say Autumn Chase and Car Max, and we're not provided with that picture of that signage. So I, all it says is Autumn Chase. Okay. And you are more than welcome to have this. And it's brick. I'm assuming, if I can ask the Car Mart representative, where would your proposed sign be?
She's got it drawn on one of those.
Is it?
On one of those pictures.
I don't see.
Showing her it's on, right now.
No, we're at Car Mart. Car Mart? No, we're at Car Mart.
First one Johnson, I'll just, in every way, car, for a dollar. To, they give to the city, it would be on Robertson Mill Road, closer to the tire company now. Right now, there's only one sign that the tire company is using. I'm not a pernent to install another sign on Robertson Mill Road, closing in front of these property.
Okay. That would be relatively close to the existing sign that's there now, what you're saying? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question on council?
Yeah, no, I, I got several.
All right.
Okay. If you'll bear with me for just a moment. Also, this, this fence has moved. We had a, what was gonna be a half fence, that was gonna be halfway across the property that was, according to these maps, would be at about the red line. And there's concern as to what appears to be an old drive, an existing drive, and I'm assuming that there is a curb cut right there. And what I'd like to ask, I don't know if there's anybody here that can answer the question, if curbing can be continued to, to where it blocks off, and I think Mr. Allen was referencing that, to where it blocks off that no longer used commercial drive. Mr. Jarrett, do you know if the, if that would be within the city's purview to do something? Is that off of the, the right-of-way or?
That's.
It is?
That's on the right-of-way.
On the right-of-way, okay.
But in a situation such as that, we would probably request that the property owner, if he wanted that, to install, and we approve.
Okay, another question I have, and I'm, I'm looking at aerial photos, and I'm just try, I'm trying to picture how, and I, I think it can be enhanced with activity. And, and that may sound crazy to some of you, but I'm, I'm looking at an empty lot that. that is only going to deteriorate further. I'm also looking at an opportunity that it would present a business that is low traffic. If you want something high traffic, let another council in five years put a convenience store up there. Something's gonna go there at some point in time. I can just about guarantee you, somehow, some way. I look at how that area has deteriorated from how nice it did look at one point in time when, uh, when it still had a viable business there before it closed down. I'd like to ask a question, and I'm, I'm not sure if the red lines are indicative of it, but how close, uh, what kind of setbacks are there as far as parking cars are concerned? Does anybody have an answer to that, to give? There's not any?
Not just the parking cars, so you can go through setbacks, but they deal with setbacks.
Can we establish a setback?
In the ordinance, gentlemen?
Sure.
You can put it in there, but it's blind.
Ms. Graham, would you come forward, please? Thank you. Because I would like to ask you, what would be a reasonable setback? I, it, it, uh, what I'm trying to do is to...
I'm assuming you were talking about...
To make sure there's visibility, but not hamper Car Mart at the same time.
I mean, are you worried about a parking hill?
No. I'm worried about how close to Robertson Mill Road can cars be parked? And you said as close as they can get. That concerns me.
Um, there is no setback for, for, you know, parking cars that can go up to your property line.
Right.
Um, so, probably where the, you, assuming you were planning on using where all the asphalt is, right? And it looks to me like the asphalt actually does go up to the property line. Then, of course, you've got the right-of-way line here also.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the right-of-way is here on Robertson Mill Road.
Okay.
But this is actually, as you see, it's already paved.
Okay. But there is some right-of-way in there in between the paving and the actual, um, property line.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. One more thing I want to address, bear with me just a little longer, and that is the thought of putting up a traffic light at either entrance or exit. Uh, certainly DOT would be involved, there's no two ways about that. I'm also concerned that you think traffic backs up now. And I'm also concerned that putting in a traffic light or even requesting for one at either an entrance or exit would, uh, increase the traffic through the neighborhood. You're gonna make it easy, easier to get in and out of that neighborhood. You can just about bet that's where people will go, and that is the, the course with the least resistance. I really do think we need to look at, especially between Arby's and McDonald's, uh, putting in a situation to where there's a right turn on it. It's very dangerous to go across five lanes of traffic to try to get to, to, uh, a business right down the street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Does anyone else?
May I address that position?
Yes, you can come up.
Okay. And Autumn Chase is a square block or square area. Basically, we've got an entrance coming in from Holly Drive and another one coming in on Melody Way. If you put a right-turn-only lane coming out of Holly Drive and a right-turn lane coming out of Melody Way, the only place that our people can go is around in a circle and back into our place again. We could not, we could not go out of Holly Drive, down to, uh, say, Applebee's, or go down to the traffic light and go right to Kmart. We couldn't go up Melody Way to Walmart. You put us in a circle. It's kind of stupid.
Yeah, at the same time, but see, you, you complain about this happening, but yet, you know, I can understand, but I, I, I think, you know, it's a double-edged sword, too. I think that if you try to create an easier path, then you're, you're going to invite more cut-through traffic. If, you know, the tra, we've, we've been trying now for about three years to get a traffic light, probably longer than that, uh, somewhere around Longhorns or in, in that area, down toward the bottom of the mall. And we're just having a very, very difficult time in convincing DOT that it is ever needed.
Please don't put us on an island where we can only go around in a circle.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting that at all, Mr. ... No, no, I'm not, Mr. Allen. I'm suggesting traffic safety. And I think you've got several opportunities being in within that, uh, area. You can certainly come back. You, you may even just institute it on one end, and to me, the most dangerous end is, is that one that is where you're trying to go north on, uh, four forty-one and coming out of Melody Way, uh, in between those two, because that is a high-traffic area, and it does get backed up, very backed up at times. Uh, that, that is not my, uh, my attempt is not to hamper people within the neighborhood, but to make it to where it is, uh, not quite as feasible for someone to try to cut through and avoid the traffic light down at the bottom of the hill. I still don't understand it, because it doesn't make sense to me. But, um, anyway, you still have that, uh, uh, way to be able to come out, even if you had a right-turn-only, that you could come out, um, to, uh, come up from, if you lived on Melody Way, you could come up, and it may be out of your way a little bit, but to come up Holly Hill and then turn, uh, Holly Drive and turn back to the left. Uh, you could also come out into the mall parking lot, and there is, uh, two exits right there, uh, within the mall, one be beside the theater and one down beside Belks. Um, but, understand your concern. Just trying to work together, try to figure all this out.
Keep this off the island.
Is any...
I just have something to say now to ask.
Okay.
I would have received many phone calls in regards to what was going on now. And what I did, I went myself, run across the street, sat in my car for at least an hour, just to see the traffic. Traffic is really bad, it's been real bad. Um, I went twice. The second time when I went, a truck, and that's why I'm concerned about trucks with, with cars, and I understand you all would not have those big trucks, and I'm glad that you addressed that. But I drive a small car. With those cars coming off of Holly Hill, getting onto Robertson Mill Road, we are just very blessed and fortunate that nothing has happened, and I don't want that to happen. But we really do need to address the traffic threat there in that area. And I don't want things to get worse. And it's not that, and I'm not saying that, um, um, against you all and your business, but I'm just not too sure if that's just appropriate business that needs to be there at this time.
So, this concludes the presentation of evidence. May I have a motion on this ordinance?
Motion that we approve the permit for special use, uh, including the special covenant restriction on this use.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the road.
Excuse me, Ms. Ward.
Wait a minute.
Councilman Reynolds, exactly what is your restrictions that you are? We need to be specific as to what those restrictions are.
The covenant restriction that was provided in the packet, which would not allow for the use of, of gas stations with or without pumps, fast-food restaurants.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Ms., uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
No.
Two and two.
It's a two and two?
Yes, ma'am.
I have thought about this, um, for a long time, and on that corner, eventually, something is gonna have to go there. I mean, it's, it's, it's evident that it's gonna happen. And I had this to happen in my district with the dentist office. Um, we, we didn't want to have anything like that, but we've had a family to move in there that was very loud and obnoxious, and we had a problem with it. And the lady that lived next door finally decided that it was better to have that dentist office from eight to five and then not have anybody else there. And to me, if a convenience store were to go in there, then you would have traffic, because some of them stay open all night. I've got one in my district that stays open all night. At least with this car dealership, you would have them there, and you would be closing, you say, about six o'clock? And you're gonna put the sign up, and you're gonna put the fence up, and you've got the restrictions that you are gonna be there for twelve years. Is that right?
Let, let me remind you that the only, the only restriction that was in Mr. Councilman Reynolds' motion was the restrictive covenant. Uh, none of the other restrictions, uh, that have been discussed here are in this particular ordinance.
It's the ones in there that they presented, that they would be willing to go along with?
No. That's why I asked Councilman Reynolds to clarify that. He said that, uh, it was the restrictive covenant, uh, that, that is part of the package that Ms. Burns, uh, provided.
That is part of the package that she provided?
Restrictive covenant.
Restrictive covenant. I'm gonna vote yes. The second hearing is to consider ordinance fifteen oh five dash oh one one to get public input on the two thousand sixteen annual operating budget. Has this, has, has the public hearing been directly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
This is an ordinance to adopt fiscal year two thousand sixteen annual operating budget.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the proposed budget?
Agent May Walden, I did speak with all of y'all at, at the work session, and my story doesn't change. So, I don't know exactly what my expectations are for this official group, but I did want to go on, on record, um, with a request that it be considered, as I proposed in the work session, where we could, where there were reductions in requested budgets, budgets that were requested by department heads, specifically recreation and economic development, um, were cut from, they were cut a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And I ask that you consider reevaluating the way health insurance cost is calculated for, uh, the new fiscal year and, uh, the budgeted increase in public relations, uh, not being, um, approved, which would, uh, put every department that has made a request at their requested value in the budget, so that we would not have any reduction in the budget from, uh, what was originally, uh, requested from the various departments. That's just a second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want, I want to make one comment very quickly, because I, he, his, uh, Mr. Cook has mentioned recreation a couple of times, and I kept looking for recreation, and where were we in the recreation business? And I finally have found that there is a general fund heading that says recreation up here. And I have, I see it right here in front of me. I got it, and, uh, I'm, I'm seeing what, exactly how, you know, what you got there. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on council that would like to make a comment or ask a question? This concludes the public hearing of the first reading of this ordinance. I'll move to new business, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution fifteen oh five dash oh twenty-five by caption.
This is to authorize an off-system safety projects memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Transportation to improve signage and striping along portions of North Jefferson Street, Dunlap Road, Blandy Road, and Hillside Drive.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the road.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
We have one alcohol application to consider. I'll ask the clerk to present that application.
This is for Emmett Kumar, um, let's see, Paramar. And it is for Deep Lax Me Incorporated, doing business as Hopin. The address is sixteen eighty-seven North Columbia Street, and it is for a beer and wine retail package to go.
You've heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the road.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
If there's no further business to conduct, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.